Any items to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I just have one, just kind of a, give me an update on the garbage pickup.
Sure. Any other items to add to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll look for a motion to approve it. Let me get that motion. It's been moved. Do we have a second or?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carried. All right. So, review of the minutes from June 12th, 2023. They were circulated in the package. Any errors or omissions to report on those minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. And moved by Counselor Digdon. Do we have a second or?
A second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to report the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carried. All right, presentation. The first one we have tonight is from Upland. "An Upland Consulting Group: The Active Living Strategy and Recreation Plan." So, we'll pass it over to Shelley.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, you're all set to go. I did share the screen with you, so you were ready to present.
Great, thank you very much. So, Warden Mumberketh, members of Regional Council, wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name's Max Shova. I am with Rec Consulting Group. As well, Carol Jamison is joining us also from Rec Consulting Group. And we are happy to present the Active Living and Recreation Strategy Plan that you have certainly, we've presented to you before. One of our other partners, Karen McTavish and I presented earlier. And you've had a copy of the planning document to look. We can go to the next slide. So, as we look, what did?
We don't see your slides, so I'm trying to make sure that you are.
Center. You could just bring it up. Can you just bring it up on yours? Because it's in the package.
Do you want us to try and share?
Yes, please.
Then you can control it. There you go.
Okay.
We have.
There, that should give you the full, the full screen of it. So, then let me just look down. So, the Active Living Strategy and Recreation Plan is a roadmap or a framework to guide recreation activities for the next 10 years for the municipality. And it's important to remember that recreation for a municipality has a host of benefits, including improved physical and mental health for its citizens, increased social cohesion and ability for community to respond to a host of issues and situations. There are economic benefits, including tourism, attracting new citizens to the municipality that a strong recreation program can produce. There's evidence that property values are impacted by good recreation infrastructure. There are environmental benefits in terms of air quality and other things with good recreation infrastructure. Crime reduction, youth development, improved quality of life are all things that a strong recreation program, a strong set of recreation activities brings to a municipality. And municipalities that invest in recreation often reap the benefits of healthier, more vibrant, and connected communities. And we've seen this, especially through COVID. So, tonight for, we're going to aim to sort of go through about 10 or 11 minutes and give you some time then for questions. But really, we want to focus on the role of council and the role of municipal leadership in that recreation piece, a look towards some of the strategic pieces. And we have six themes that are in your plan: Active Living, Administration and Accountability, Developing Strong Community Connections, Facilities, Parks and Trail Leaders Program Service Delivery. Carol is going to walk us through the first three. I'll walk through the last three, and then Carol will wrap it up, and then we'll have a quick questions.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. So now, we're going to take a closer look at each theme. So, the first one, as Max mentioned, is Active Living. Quite often, the terms physical activity and active living are used interchangeably, but they're not the same. This plan speaks to their difference and the significance that difference makes to the overall philosophy and implementation of this Active Living Plan and Recreation Strategy. First of all, Active Living is a lifestyle that integrates physical activity into everyday life, but it's not a formalized exercise program or routine. Current thinking has evolved to take a much broader view of movement and suggests focusing on Active Living over physical activity. Active Living is less intimidating and more manageable for community members to incorporate into their daily lives at home, work, or play. So, as you can see, these four municipal roles speak to creating a culture of Active Living and capitalizing on your natural and man-made assets. So, we weren't going to read them through. We're hoping that you're kind of reading it while I'm babbling on here. You can read those roles. So, Max, you want to take the next slide? The next theme area is Administration and Accountability. Let me begin by acknowledging that your citizens are generally pleased with the services that are provided by your Recreation Department. But with that being said, we found that for the most part, that satisfaction is based upon a perception that the department only exists to organize and deliver structured programs. While that is important to your residents, it fails to recognize the department's full potential to create that culture of Active Living that I earlier referenced. This plan speaks to the need to align the department's human and fiscal resource capacity to the roles that are designed to meet the recreational needs of the county. At the point when we were working on the plan, there were no policies to guide or rationalize the department's involvement. This has been challenging for your staff from working to balance the provision of direct programs with assisting communities and their sport recreation groups in organizing and managing their own opportunities and amenities. As you see, these municipal roles suggest ensuring your recreation services have sufficient resources and that those resources are supportive of policies and procedures that rationalize and clarify to the public the delivery of quality, safe, and inclusive opportunities. Can you go to the next one, Max? The next theme is Developing Strong Community Connections. Nurture and supporting community-based organizations that share common and compatible goals to the municipality enables the sharing of resources and knowledge, promotes a more efficient exchange of information, and avoids duplication and overlap. Your community organizations express the desire to gather on a more regular basis to network, coordinate, collaborate, and learn from one another. That desire provides an excellent opportunity for the municipality to play a leadership role in the broader community organizational network. With that in mind, these roles focus on enhancing the department's capacity to engage, connect, and provide expertise to and with community organizations. I'll now turn it back to Max.
So, the, the next theme was the theme of facilities, parks, and trails. And one of the key roles in any municipality is the provision of infrastructure. Most of the large recreation infrastructure options, such as your arena, are simply not possible without municipal contribution, capital building, upkeep, and so on. So, the municipality needs to consider what infrastructure is necessary to offer a certain level of services, a certain level of opportunity to your citizens that the municipality will build and create. It is important with thinking about facilities to consider those that are owned and who they're owned by and those that, and who they're operated by. And you end up with four categories. Facilities that are owned and operated by the municipality, such as your arena. Facilities that are owned by the municipality but operated by a community group. Similarly, you've got potentially facilities that are owned by the community, but the municipality operates. And finally, there are recreation facilities that are both owned and operated by community groups. Not every piece of infrastructure needs to be owned by the municipality or operated by it, but resources are limited and duplication should be, should be eliminated. So, as you build those community connections, one of the things is for the municipality to act as a coordinator to enhance the operation of each other to perhaps support some of those community-owned facilities as they go about building and maintaining their facilities. The municipality should look to support some of those facilities, not also just with finances or fiscal support, but also expertise in how to manage and maintain those services. Finally, you would see in a number of these sections and facilities and parks and trails is one of them, that we recommend that the municipality has a standard of what facilities, outdoor, parks, trails, and so on, should be available to every citizen in the community so that you can focus on ensuring a level of equity within infrastructure throughout the municipality. The, the next theme that we listed was Leadership. And there are a number of key pieces of leadership that the municipality needs to take a role in. One of them is building the capacity of volunteer organizations. Your sport organizations, community halls, other groups like that, do better, work to do more, and are more successful if they're following best practices in recruitment, retention, training. And the groups by themselves often don't have the capacity to do that. And so, the municipality can offer that leadership to them to help them move forward. A critical role in leadership is in the development of coaches, instructors, officials, or activities. A single group that wants to offer one program or one service does not have the capacity to train those coaches easily. But collectively, the municipality can help develop those skills for the community. And then those different organizations can tap that increased capacity to do more and to, to have more impact for your citizens. So, that collective, how do we build the skills of program leaders and community leaders is critical for the municipality. And also, one of the other roles that we've identified here is the responsibility of the municipality to invest in its staff and to ensure that they have a working knowledge of best and promising practices. In many of these roles, you will see the municipality is, is the leader. They are the, the people that community groups should turn to looking for those great ideas or how do we work together? How do we enhance and help each other? And that will only happen if your staff have all that knowledge and all that information at their fingertips. The last theme is Program Service Delivery. As Carol mentioned, municipal citizens are generally pleased with the work of the municipality, but they do look at recreation as running programs. And quite frankly, the municipality should be focused on third-party, indirect, and direct delivery, so all of those methods. Municipality doesn't have to offer a recreation program. It should ensure that the recreation programs it wants that are valued by its citizens are available. And currently, that is not how the citizens view the Recreation Department. But the indirect and third-party delivery methods are important, and they will create more opportunities for residents and visitors to the municipality. The municipality should focus and optimize the natural assets that the community has and make sure that they are used as much as possible. The municipality should, should be a leader in this work and demonstrate commitment to these things themselves. And you should make sure that there are strong links with other groups in the community. The Vaclate community has expressed interest in being involved in recreation in the municipality, but also bringing recreation and bringing people to their community. And those are all things that fall within that Program Service Delivery. It's so much bigger than just the, the idea of running a set of yoga class. So, Carol will sort of wrap up.
Yeah, but before we respond to any questions you may have, we want to thank and acknowledge the commitment and involvement of your staff in the plan's development. We put a lot of demands on your staff in terms of timing and information, but they were always ready to respond and very capable. We also understand that portions of the plan are already being worked on, and that's great to see. We look forward to following your progress. So, if time permits, we're willing to take questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Just down to get her done.
I think we're all right.
There was a lot of high-importance ones. That was, that gave me a little bit of pause as I read the report. I think just seeing that there was a lot that were a high degree of importance. And so, it was good to have the timing there, which was, like I said, that was helpful for sure. A lot of work to do.
Counselor, I think it's also important to reiterate that one of the roles of council will be to determine priorities and, and based on, on the individual needs of the municipality that you know so well, but also on budget and other competing needs. So, that's one of the, the roles that council will need to, need to tackle that this goes forward.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate all your time. And if, if council would like to, we could move that, that this decision, to refer this decision to the adoption of the Active Living Strategy to the, for the Recreation Plan to the next regular council meeting, if Counselor saw desire.
Yes. Do we need a motion to move that forward to regular council? And I'll make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved. And do we have a second or? Yep. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the committee recommend to refer the decision to adoption of the Active Living Strategy and Recreation Plan to the next regular council meeting. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion is carried. Thanks again.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Next presentation we have is Stan Johnson. "Two-Eyed Seeing Turning Vision Into Action." That's you.
I'm afraid Stan just stepped up to the bathroom, but I was listening to the first email.
Okay.
Is our presentation here in this spot? Okay. Great. Well, thanks so much for having the opportunity to come in again and speak with you folks. I'm sure, my name, by the way, is Ron Newkum, and this is Stan Johnson. We coordinate the Bredor Lakes Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative. You may have heard that name before, or maybe not. But we do find that there's so many organizations around the lakes doing environmental work, sometimes people get confused about what is the role of each organization in the network? How does that all play out? And even we find too, there's always, you know, new people coming to the table and coming and going. And in most cases, most people were not around when SEPI was first organized and began its work. So, a lot of people don't really understand necessarily how the organizational structure operates. So, we're happy to have the opportunity to come and talk to you today about it and how it benefits everybody who's on the network. Now, we all know about the Bredor Lakes here in Cape Breton, which is one of the treasures that we have really in the whole country. It was back in, well, well before the 2000s, that people who were concerned about the Bredor Lakes started to realize there's pressures that affect the health and success of the Bredor Lakes. And those people came together and formed what we call the Bredor Lakes Collaborative Environmental Planning Initiative. It was in 2005 that they signed the Bredor Lakes Charter you can see on the right there. And it was the First Nations chiefs and the mayors and wardens of Unamagui, Cape Breton, that signed that charter and committed their respective organizations to the collaborative process, as well as some of the provincial ministers and the federal RDGs at the time. Others have joined since then. But they all committed to this idea that we're going to work together and collaborate on keeping the Bredor Lakes healthy and safe. And so, Richmond County was one of those original signers of the charter and thus has been a SEPI member since, since its inception. What exactly is SEPI? Well, basically, it's just a discussion table. It's a place where these groups come together to have these discussions and talk about what can be done to keep the Bredor Lakes healthy. And we're not just talking about the environment, because as our Terms of Reference and our Management Plan state, you can't have a successful ecosystem if the people in the ecosystem are not also being successful, right? The two have to mesh together for a completely successful system. So, SEPI is basically a discussion table. Now, those who originally signed the charter, those First Nations chiefs, the mayors and wardens, the ministers, the RDGs, they are the actual, and you are, the actual SEPI members who make up the organization. And we refer to you as the senior council. So, that's, you're the ones with the authority to make decisions about what things happen around the lakes. But obviously, you don't have the time to come and work down on the shores of the lakes every day on these topics. So, a long time ago, the senior council appointed a management committee that would handle the operation of the organization. And the Unamagui Institute of Natural Resources, based in Eschazoni, serves as a secretariat or does the administrative work for that organization. So, that secretariat then in turn employs us, the coordinators, and we kind of look after the day-to-day operation of things. Now, there's a steering committee for the organization, and that is made up of representatives from the senior council members as well as any interested stakeholders around the lakes. Anybody who has a vested interest in seeing things for the lakes turn out successful, sit on this steering committee. And they serve as an advisory body to you, the senior council members, so they can identify what activities are going on in the lakes, what are the issues that the lakes face, the communities in the lakes that they face, where are there gaps in knowledge that we might have to try and fill in, things like that. But along with the steering committee to advise the senior council, we have an elders council, and we also have our SEPI youth. So, we get their perspective and input on these issues and, and hear their voice as well. And then, if there are things identified that need some action taken, like maybe an issue comes up and senior council determines, well, we need more information about it before we can make a decision. We take the time to form task teams as needed to look into these issues or to deal with certain things like that. So, it's with this organizational structure then that SEPI is able to capitalize on its position as a collaborative discussion table for knowledge sharing, for transparency in, in activities and so on. And this has really proved to be a successful way to, to manage things. It goes along very well with the management plan that SEPI came up with back in 2011, which talked about the need for, and, and the plan is, it's more of a management planning process that we use where we constantly collaborate, sit together at a table, talk about the issues, decide what's the best way to proceed. Now, it's helpful probably to consider some things from our Terms of Reference if you haven't actually taken the time to read through the entire document. But we obviously don't have the time to go through everything today. And we do recommend, though, take the time. It's on our website, bredorlakessepi.ca. You'll find not only the management plan, but our Terms of Reference. But there are things like our vision statement to lead a unique collaboration of partners that incorporate both traditional and Western perspectives in order to foster a healthy and productive Bredor Lakes watershed ecosystem. We also have a purpose statement in that Terms of Reference, as well as the work that we do is organized under four objective groups here. And in fact, if you see our work plan and our budget, we try to group all our activities under these four objectives so that we can kind of keep things organized. And we also follow these seven guiding principles as well that help us to do this work in a collaborative way. So, for instance, number six, we will work together. That's a thing that all of the SEPI members committed to from the very beginning. So, I would encourage you at your leisure to take time to read through that if you'd really like to understand how the organization functions on a kind of a day-to-day way. Now, we can't talk though about SEPI and the collaborative process without discussing this idea of two-eyed seeing. It's a concept that's been familiar to the Mi'kmaq for thousands and thousands of years, but it was really our SEPI elder advisor, Albert Marshall, who first kind of put it into words. And to put it in its just very simplest terms, it's that one eye is on an indigenous way of looking at things, the other eye is on a Western way of looking at things. You can't have true success in collaboration unless you use both eyes to look at issues. And really, what it's talking about is until you've had all perspectives and they all work together and mesh together, you're not going to have true success. That is the basis for everything that we do at the SEPI table. We take this to heart, and in fact, all the SEPI members committed to using the two-eyed seeing approach on this collaborative process as, as they do their work. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that concept coming up here when Stan takes the floor. Here's a fair question. What value does the SEPI table give to each individual member? It's great to say I'm dedicated to supporting the group, but we all need to know, how's this forwarding our own, our own initiatives as well, right? Well, for one thing, it gives everybody access to that discussion table, that collaborative discussion table. So, you as municipal leaders get a chance to talk to people at the federal level, all with the same goal in mind of seeing the success of the Bredor Lakes. Any projects that you undertake have input from all the stakeholders. It also reduces duplication of efforts around the lakes, which has been a problem in the past. It supports transparency in activity and policy development. All members receive updates. If a federal department does a research project and you could benefit from that information, well, it's all there at the table for everyone to, to benefit from. We also hold conferences and workshops where all the SEPI members and any relevant stakeholders can get together with their peers, talk about those gaps in knowledge and policy issues that are faced, and be able to discuss ways to mitigate those things. And here's a quote right from our Terms of Reference, that the SEPI process, one of the values it brings to each member is that it provides a way forward for First Nations and other governments to maintain their established trust, transparency, harmony, and cooperation while discharging their various mandates towards the Bredor Lakes watershed. Now, there's many, many activities taking place within the entire SEPI network, obviously. Here's just a few. Here's just a few highlights of some of the things, some of the initiatives being conducted. What's on our plate, on our minds most right now is this last one, this 2023 Edo Updame Two-Eyed Seeing Conference, which Stan is going to speak to in a second here. It's coming up in just a couple of months, and it's, the goal of it, as Stan will discuss, is to just really help us focus on this collaboration process and how we can all make the most of it. The way SEPI is supported or is able to operate, of course, is by all the members contributing resources. Now, one big part of that is the in-kind support that we get from the entire network helping the organization run. So, Stan actually undertook a few years ago to calculate what is the value of, for instance, you providing as a SEPI member, a representative to sit on the steering committee. Warden Mumberkett, right now, is co-chair of the management committee. What is the value of their time, as well as other resources that could get put into the process? It's possibly over $600,000, which is just amazing that we see that kind of support for this process taking place. And of course, though, we need actual dollars to operate, or salaries to pay, and just the regular, you know, cost of doing business. And so, this is just an excerpt from a previous budget that shows how the SEPI members contribute to the functioning of things. We just bring that up because when you're having your next budget discussions and you see a request from SEPI, you'll understand what it's all about and how that contributes to such a broad range of activities and collaboration among so many members in this large network. So, we really just want to take the time to thank you that you continually support this process, this collaborative process, and help it to move forward. And really, it's because of the generous support from every SEPI member working together, then all of us get to sit together and collaborate on things that we're actually really concerned about and want to see move forward. But I want to take some of our time so that Stan can talk about this upcoming conference, so turn it over to him.
Alrighty. Alright, folks. The conference Ronald was talking about, as you all know, everybody, we've heard about two-eyed seeing, reconciliation over stuff last few years. We find a lot of organizations, such as yourself and other groups around the country, try, want to get involved in the two-eyed seeing and the reconciliation, but sort of, nobody wants to get their feet wet or, you know, how do we go about doing it, what are the steps involved? So, what this conference, we're hoping to do is help organizations such as yourselves, our partners all around, governments everywhere that we work with, and to show people basically, how do I get involved, why do we get ourselves involved? How do we get our organization working with two-eyed seeing? And how can we move forward with this and work with our people on this? So, what, Ronald, you want to pass these out for me? These are just a quick synopsis, one page of what's going to happen, this little conference we're going to have here. We've had a conference every five years, about the last conference we had was in 2016. We had David Suzuki as our keynote speaker, and that's when we discussed sustainable development opportunities around Bredor Lakes. Have you developed any of these initiatives that you would affect the environment in some ways? So, we had that conference in 2016. COVID sort of took a little detour to everybody, I guess, the last couple of years, it delayed everything. So, what basically this conference is going to be all about is, how do we, how do we, as an organization, groups like yourselves, get involved in two-eyed seeing? How do we get involved, how can we bring some lessons back to our organizations and move forward with these initiatives? We don't want to take up too much of your time. The information here is with us, we've got a sponsorship package we also have as well. We've got one of these, but we've got electronic version, just secretaries. Here's a sponsorship package, and there's also another one here for presenters. If you've got, if you just read up some of those, if you want to present it.
We've got the copy of these in our package, too.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, this conference is going to happen in Member Two, November 13th to the 15th. We'll have a few events going on, there'll be a feast, there'll be presenters from all over the country that have engaged two-eyed seeing in their organizations and how they work with it. We've got a lot of great presenters that have connected us, that have actually worked with two-eyed seeing in their initiatives, and they wanted to showcase what they've been doing, so we'll see a lot of those presenters. We'll have cultural excursions, as well as in Member Two and Eschazoni, to guide people on some cultural experiences they may want to get involved in. We'll have keynote address, experience by special guest speakers. We'll have a gala night, on one night, with performances and cultural performances, and some good traditional food as well. Engaging panels, discussions, so it'll be a great event to get involved in. There's opportunities to get involved, attend a conference as a presenter on two-eyed seeing, which is one of the packages here I gave you. Attend a conference as a participant, registration is opening up, actually, is it opening up now? I think it's open now, so it's just online now, it's on our website.
BredorLakesCA/conference.
And then there's also sponsored, three levels of opportunities for sponsorship, so, your financial assistance will be helpful in doing this. I was talking to Amanda on this, and she would see how maybe Richmond County can get involved in doing some type of sponsorship with this event, or maybe some volunteer work. The sponsors are breakdown, which is as follows, Mauia, Ma'omia, the gathering sponsor, which is $25,000. You got a full-page ad in the program, a full-page message from the sponsoring the program, as well as four free registration tickets to attend the event. Top logo placement, all materials, prominent placement of supplied banner within the conference, prominent placement of supplied banner within. Alright, opportunity for video playing at the conference, your video of your choice, if you're, and then recognition media, as well as some social media as well, so that'll be going out. We've got Rise Entertainment, actually, is our conference coordinator, and they're taking care of this type of information for us. Then there's the second breakdown, is to get legal sponsor, which is $10,000, $24,000, and you can see the breakdown there. I don't want to go through every piece of it, but it gives you an idea of what it's all about. The next one is Mooin Bear sponsor, $5,000 to $9,099. Same, a little less on each one, but it goes down to Gado sponsor, Gado, which means ear, all these are Mi'kmaq words. Alusuenu is a traveling sponsor, basically, it's, I guess, if you ever watched Fraggle Rock one time with Uncle Traveling, Matt was traveling everywhere. That would be this person, he's a people that travel all over the place. We've got a few at our office that don't stop traveling, they're always out on the road. And then elder and youth support sponsors as well. We have elders and youth, it'll be an active event. We've got a couple of organizations that are working with them individually, do some work with them and place them in the conference, so we can actually do some initiatives. And then, didn't we just have the sponsorship forums here? And then the conference registration fee at the end here, which is, I need glasses. In the middle of the age where you need glasses.
But that's all on the website.
Yeah, and we've got it in our package as well. No, thank you very much for that, I really appreciate that. Is any questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, and if not, we could, we could take a motion to refer this decision for the sponsorship of the Two-Eyed Seeing Conference to the next regular council meeting, if somebody wants to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, that the committee recommend to refer the decision of sponsorship of the Two-Eyed Seeing Conference to the next regular council meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried, alright. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, take care.
Alright, next up on the agenda, item number five, under new business, we've got some committee appointments. So, there are three separate committee appointments here we have.
Yes, sir.
Pass this along to the CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one, and again, as we're starting to get these committees up and going and established, we realized that all five of council were appointed to both of these committees. That's not necessarily required, so we're trying to lessen the burden, and as we establish the Terms of Reference, we want to get it right. So, we only need two for each. So, just to make it clear, the Advisory Committee, of course, is the committee that controls the governance of our emergency management, makes sure our compliance with the MGA, the Emergency Management Act, other pieces of legislation, and that the structure's in place. The Emergency Planning Committee is the one where we actually start putting the emergency management plan into action. We reach out to various stakeholders in the community, whether it's industrial partners, the fire departments, police departments, Nova Scotia Health, TELUS, Alliant, Bell, all those guys, they'll all be part of that planning committee. So, that's a rundown of what the two are, so if somebody wants to be on the governance side, we need two people for that. And if somebody wants to be more into the planning side and working with Steve on the actual emergency management plan, those would be the two people we're looking for for that one. Okay? So, I guess we put nominations open. I'll bring it back to you, Mr. Chair, to call for nominations, please.
Any nominations from the floor for the Municipal Emergency Management Advisory Committee?
So, presume, presume, I'm just, I mean presumably, if there's two on each, like, we're going to need to probably be on something. I have no experience at all in terms of planning, therefore, I would pre-select myself under advisory.
And I believe the warden wanted her name to stand for advisory as well.
Okay.
That suits us just fine.
Well, I can't speak for Councilor Digden, but I'd go on the planning committee.
Yeah, as well, I would go on the planning and.
I'll do fences.
The, you, Councilor Melanie, provide that input because I was going to nominate her first.
Alright, so we want to have a nomination of Councilor Melanie Sampson?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd nominate Councilor Melanie Sampson.
Do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
Okay. And then?
I'll nominate the warden in her absence, but I think she, you've spoken to her, and she'll accept that nomination, okay?
So.
Did you have interest, Deputy?
I'll do the fences, if you'll, the third one down.
Works out easy, I guess.
Five spots, so. So, we have a motion required for that. So, if somebody wants to move to nominate Councilor Melanie Sampson and Warden Amanda Mumberkett?
Make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, and we've seconded and seconded, that the committee recommend Councilor Melanie Sampson and Warden Amanda Mumberkett be appointed to the Municipal Emergency Management Advisory Committee.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
I guess I should have told you the frequency of those meetings, because one of them meets a lot more often than the other one.
Is it the planning?
The planning meets very rarely.
Oh, that is disappointing.
Because you're pulling all the people together. The, but the advisory is quarterly, I believe. It's only four times a year, so.
So, we'll open for nominations to the Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee.
So, I'll nominate Councilor Mike Digden for that committee.
Okay, do you accept?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'll nominate Councilor Sean Sampson.
Do you accept?
I do.
Thank you. Alright.
So, I'll make the motion to appoint Councilor Mike Digden and Councilor Sean Sampson to the Emergency, Municipal Emergency Management Planning Committee.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there a seconder?
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you very much. And the third one is the Fences Arbitration Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so again, as you guys know, we had an issue come up, we're required to have this by the MGA. It gets called on a complaint basis, we have seven days to bring the committee up and acting. The province has now assigned our person, so now we need a counselor assigned to this committee as well.
I'll nominate Councilor Brent Sampson, Deputy Warden.
I'll accept, thank you very much. Any further nominations? Nobody else? So, if we could have a motion of that effect?
Mike made it.
Okay, Councilor Digden, thank you very much, has moved that the committee recommend to counsel that Deputy Warden Brent Sampson be appointed to the Fences Arbitration Committee. Do we have a seconder?
Yep.
Seconded and seconded, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have the Warden's Report. So, that was added to our agenda?
It was.
And I don't know if there's any questions, I wouldn't be able to answer them anyhow. But it goes to show, people think it's quiet in December, and it's not, eh?
No.
No.
Alright, moving right along. Next item is something I wanted to bring. I had it brought up to me from a member of.
Mr. Chair, actually, could we have a motion to receive the Warden's Report, please?
Yeah, sorry, could we have a motion to receive the Warden's Report? It's been moved, seconder?
I will.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you very much. So, the next item, item number seven. This was brought up to me by, there had been a discussion, one of the fire departments, it was brought to my attention that first responders felt it would be a useful tool if residents had something along the lines of a fridge magnet. Now, there are, I believe there are some programs out there for people with certain issues, maybe that this is already in place. But what their thought was here is if you could get buy-in to get the general population to have these on their fridge with some medical information attached, or have it, whether it be located on the fridge or in the fridge, if it had to be. But the issue being that many times, somebody requiring medical assistance, first responders show up, they may not be, you know, they, like, they may not be able to communicate, they may not be able to tell them what medications they're on. Possibly there's someone else in the house, they may be very frantic, depending on the situation. This would just provide an easier, easier way for the first responders, as well as EHS members, to determine, okay, here's, here's what medication this person is currently taking, and sort of act accordingly based on their expertise. The reason I want to bring it up now is just thought that if it was something we could discuss at maybe budget time, going forward, if we wanted to look at some kind of program that might be possible, we could discuss it now and whether or not we want to recommend that to staff to look into what could be possible, and if there are similar programs elsewhere.
I'll open the floor, any discussion?
No, I, you know, anything that can, that can help any EHS or first responder, paramedic, you know, attend to a scene or attend to a resident, anything we can do to help that situation for sure, I'd be, I'd be willing to put a motion forward to, you know, have staff investigate what our municipalities are doing and refer to maybe, you know, budget, budget time, and then, you know, I would be in favor of moving on something like this, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, Mr. Chair. Honestly, I could be, I try and get to my parents every weekend, and something could happen there. And honestly, even being there every weekend or every second, I couldn't tell you the medications that they're on, and you're going to need a large magnet for some people because they're, and it's not all going to fit on a medical alert. So, I think that'd be incredibly important to the EHS, and if it's an easy way to do this, you know, the onus is on the people to keep it updated and relevant, but it couldn't hurt.
Just to be clear, it wasn't my idea, I can't take credit for it.
No, no.
It just dropped to my attention, but I think it's a fantastic idea.
I do, too.
Deputy, was the idea brought forward from, from EHS, or?
It was from first responders.
Okay, so, so I would support the motion made by Councilor Sean, but I think what I would sort of ask would be that in the gathering of information, that we would reach out to EHS to see, because there are some programs, I think, where when they respond to a home, they get a list of people's medical records. I'm not sure, I don't, that's not my area of expertise by any stretch, but I think we'd want to reach out to them as well. I can still see it being useful for first responders, I still think it's a good idea, because they're not going to have access to a lot of those pieces. But, but EHS may know some programs that are available that we could just promote to residents as opposed to actually doing it ourselves. that we could just promote to residents as opposed to actually doing it ourselves or whatever.
Good point.
So on that note, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great idea. It's, I mean, the guys get calls every week in your area, in my area, and again, they walk through the doors, and they have no idea what they're facing with somebody unconscious on the floor, whether, you know, diabetic or heart attack, or a pacemaker or anything of, of the sorts. So again, a little bit of information goes a long way. I would, I would tend to say, instead of just the, and I don't know the cost, and it's something we could look at, maybe is that little SKU where they?
QR code?
The little QR code, might be able to put something on the QR code, and it pops up everybody's.
Another thing could be your proper address, your civic. So anybody in the house, like, if I was over visiting you, I don't necessarily know your civic address.
Yeah.
And if something happened to you, if the civic address is right on that magnet, I can call in with your proper address without you being conscious.
Yep.
Just little things to build on it.
Yeah, I think it's a sort of a great idea that staff investigate, might be able to add some things to this, and, yeah. See what's possibly even done elsewhere.
We'll give this to Steve to run with.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Have staff investigate the possibility?
Stay tuned.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on, the community acknowledgements. Now, I'll, we'll go around after, but I'll, I'll read the three volunteers of the month we had since we've last met. For June 2023, it was Cheryl Howey. Cheryl Howey and her husband have relocated to Locklomond and made it their home. She's become a valuable member of her community, volunteering at the community hall and assisting with events held by the Locklomond Volunteer Fire Department. She spent many hours painting the basement and displayed some of her artwork on the walls. She's committed her time to working on completing the kitchen to have it ready to host summer events. She enjoys baking and art, and I can tell you the baking, what I've tasted was excellent. Two of the many skills that she utilizes to contribute to her community. Cheryl's a true inspiration to the women in her community by encouraging others to get involved. She hosts art classes and enjoys teaching others new skills and the benefits of being a volunteer. Her community is very grateful for her passion and ongoing support. Please join us in recognizing the hard work, dedication, and commitment Cheryl provides to their community. We thank you all, we thank you for all you do for Richmond County. And then for July. We had Lorraine King was the Volunteer of the Month for July 2023. Lorraine King began volunteering in the St. Francis de Sales Parish Lower River inhabitants approximately thirty years ago, teaching religion to students and candidates preparing for their first communion and confirmation. During this time, she was also a member of the Riverdale Credit Union Board and Director of, oh, sorry, Riverdale Credit Union Board of Directors and the Secretary of the Home and School Association of the Walter Frasier Education Center. Presently, Lorraine is a member of the St. Francis de Sales Parish Council, Liturgical Committee, and the Parish Finance Committee. She can be found contributing to her community in a variety of ways, such as preparing church linens, investments weekly, as well as for special occasions, such as Christmas weddings, funerals, baptisms. You will also find her supporting fundraising projects for her community. Her involvement in events and activities is very instrumental to their success. Please join us in recognizing the hard work, dedication, and commitment Lorraine provides to their community. We thank you, uh, we thank you for all you do for Richmond County. And last but not least, August of 2023, we had Jerry Sampson as the August Volunteer of the Month. Jerry is a very dedicated individual who was always there to assist his community, including the Legion and its veterans. Comrade Jerry received a certificate of appreciation for all the work he assisted in with on the sick and visiting committee of the Royal Canadian Legion. Jerry was a CIC officer with the 235 AROC cadets, assisting the young cadets to reach their goals and potential. Jerry has received his life membership with the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 150, along with the Queen's Diamond and Platinum Jubilee Medals. Jerry is always ready and willing to use his singing and guitar-playing talents to entertain the residents of the St. Anne Community and Nursing Care Center, local benefits, as well as local churches. He assists numerous volunteer organizations with their fundraisers, such as the Legion breakfast and fish fry meals, along with assisting organizations in need with maintenance duties. Jerry is a very unique and wonderful individual who is definitely worthy of this recognition. Please join us in recognizing Jerry for his hard work, dedication, commitment to his community. We thank you all for what you do for Richmond County. So that's great, some, some great acknowledgements for the last three months, and some volunteers there. I'll open the floor to any other community acknowledgements that councillors would like to add.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that Jerry makes a mean omelet, so they weren't lying there when I came to breakfast.
Yeah. We, myself and Counselor Sampson volunteered one time to go out and help. I thought I was gonna get the apron and the spatula, but Jerry very quickly directed me over to the sink and the washcloth and said, we all start here. You're not at this level yet. So again, he does make a mean omelet, and, yeah.
For sure. For me, Debbie Warden, if I may, I know that we've all been off for the summer, for the last couple of months. I just want to thank and acknowledge all the committees and volunteers. This county is full of heritage and culture, and when it comes to the summer months, we have a lot of groups and volunteers and committees that, that put on festivals and events and, you know, fundraisers and all that stuff, so just kind of want to congratulate everybody involved in being leaders in the community. It's, it was a great summer, not wear- wise, but when it comes to celebrating our heritage and culture, there's a lot of good people there, right, so I'll thank them. Also, when we left here before the summer break, I was talking about baseball. So here we are, and everything just wrapped up yesterday. So just want to reach out and, and acknowledge and congratulate and thank all the baseball coaches, parents, kids. A lot of these young kids represented our, our county in the province of Nova Scotia, playing in some provincial tournaments, so just want to acknowledge all the coaches and the parents of the Almanack Mariners, the Richmond Hawks, the Richmond Cougars. So job well done representing our county, and just a great bunch of coaches and baseball players and teammates and parents, you know, so. And sticking to baseball. Yesterday was the championship game of the, championship game of the Richmond Amateur Baseball Association. You know, of course, talking about culture and heritage in this county, you know, you have to talk about RAB and its history. And like the, you know, we've all heard the whole saying about a fine wine gets better with age, right? So that's all a person can say about the Pendergast Caps. Every year they get older. I think, I think every year they get better, right? So just want to congratulate them. I think we had a break in 2020 from COVID, where there was no championship awarded for the RAB. I think that was the first time ever, I think. But, yeah, from 2019 to 2023, they've won it four straight years, excluding the year that COVID hit, right? So just want to congratulate the, RAB is a league, the president, Gary David, Tom Byram-Chef, Eddie Bungee, and everybody that's involved in that league, and congratulate all the teams on, on a great season. And, yeah, hats off to the Pendergast Caps for their ongoing, their ongoing championships, so. Thank you.
All right, well, that's great. If there's any others I'm not sure, if not, we'll move on to correspondence. All right, item nine here, we have correspondence. We got a briefing note about the cost share road upgrades for J-Class roads.
I can. This is our standard briefing note on the J-Class roads. And barring what we've been going through with our interaction on the service exchange, I think we proceed as per normal on this, select any roads, keep with the list that we had, and just recent med, or if there are changes in the priorities, to let us know.
Yeah, well, one of them's off the list now, it's not.
One is, yep.
Yeah. So that was great to see that done.
Yeah.
Is there any others people would like to add to the?
Yeah.
I have one I had considered, but I'll open the floor first if there's anybody else has one that they've been looking at. Yeah, I was looking at the Kings Road located in Rockdale, which has often had some issues with culvert repairs and so on and that several times over. That one's on the second page, I think.
Yep, right there.
Right there. If there's no other submissions, I'd be willing to submit that.
Kings Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna say there's no other submissions. I just think I would like to take the time to cover the list. Or do you need a submission tonight?
When do we need to have this entered again? It says here somewhere.
October 31st is the application deadline.
Yeah.
So it has time to take it back to council?
Okay. Do you want to defer this to the September council meeting and give a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You can just defer it.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. So the next was the voluntary vulnerable person registry, and this came from.
Well, it started in Halifax, and then it came out of another re-mail meeting that our Emergency Services Coordinator came back with as well. And it looks like a really good idea as well. This is a vulnerable person registry. It came out of Halifax after the fires they had recently as well, and Post Fiona is, it would be a volunteer registry for people that would have trouble evacuating or getting to a comfort center on their own, that they put their name forward, so we know where these people are when the bell rings and we're setting up comfort centers or emergency shelters. We know we have people in our community that we have to go help them get to those places. So this is a good start on that, to self-identify. It's voluntary at this point, but it would be another very useful tool, I think, going forward with our emergency response.
But are we asking here for the province to have a provincial line?
Yep.
Yeah. Rather than having.
County by county.
Possibly having different, and even especially, we can consider people sometimes moving around for summer accommodations and somehow, you know, if you had a provincial registry, I think it could be much easier to, to streamline everything. And that information, you know, available to the, the counties.
All right, so if there's support, we could have a motion that the committee recommend to council to support the resolution to have a province-wide voluntary vulnerable person registry?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. That's right, same as the next.
Okay. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the committee recommend to council to support the resolution to have the pro- to have a province-wide voluntary vulnerable person registry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. The next, Laura Squires with the Fetal Alcohol Syndrome Proclamation Request.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this one came in, same as last year. It, it comes in through Newfoundland. They're the ones that got the grant to spearhead this, but they do it for the whole Maritimes. And of course, our proclamation that would be made at the next council meeting would be switched and reworded for us here in Nova Scotia to recognize the issue of fetal alcohol syndrome.
So based on the information in our package, we now entertain a motion that the committee recommend to council to support the request to declare the month of September as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder, FASD Awareness Month.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved, thank you. Do we have a seconder?
Yeah, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the committee recommend to council to support the request to declare the month of September as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder, FASD Awareness Month. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion has been carried. We'll read that proclamation at the regular council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Office of the Information Privacy Commissioner, the Right to Know Week proclamation request.
Similarly, Mr. Chair, this will be for September 25th till October 1st, and it's a motion from council tonight to refer this to council to be read, that the Right to Know Week with the Municipal Government Act and acknowledging the international right to know will take place here in Richmond County between September 21st and October 1st of 2023.
So I'll make that motion to refer to regular council for the acceptance and reading of the proclamation.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee recommend to council to support the request to declare September 25th to October 1st, 2023, as Right to Know Week. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, moving along, we got correspondence for information purposes. The Nova Scotia Federation of Agriculture.
That was the appointment of our person to the Fences Arbitration Committee?
Yeah. So that.
That happened very quickly. It was fantastic.
Yeah, that fills out the committee, and that's, that's fantastic.
It does.
So just for information, Sarah Nettleton has been appointed as a representative on the committee, commencing immediately and for a period of four years, ending in June 2027.
Perfect.
Next, we've got Warden Eddie Nickerson, the municipality of Barrington. It's a letter of request to the Honorable Stephen Guebeau for exemption to the volunteer emergency service providers from the new fuel, new fuel changes, or charges, sorry. This is just, we were copied on this letter to inform us basically that.
They're trying to make something happen here. Again, this one's not really fleshed out yet. That's why it's in information only, because, you know, really, what is the mechanism? How would it be tracked? How are they gonna do this? So right now, we, of course, we, anything that comes to address to council or, or the administration, you get to see. But this one is in info only, because it's really not actionable at this time on, at our, at this point.
All right, and the next item we have is the Nova Scotia Health Community Health Boards Coordinator from Dorothy Bennett, Connecting the Dots Invitation. There's a save the date there for October 17th, 2023, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Port Hoxbury Civic Center. It's an event that will be going on right in Port Hoxbury, and the information is there in your package, should you wish to attend. Moving right along, unfinished business. We have the Food Cycle Science Municipal Pilot Program. This is what we had spoken about in June, whatever it was.
It was, yeah. Lady came in virtually to do the presentation on her systems. We've had some follow-up correspondence, as you would have read. But the investment would be quite large for us, so it would have to be deferred till budget, I'm, I'm sure. But at the same time, she's telling us that the grant that she uses is secured for 2023, not necessarily for 2024. So I, I would move the coun- or I would ask the council, accept this as information, and that we revisit it at budget time based on her information in the new year, because we're gonna have to wait and see what funds, what grants she has available in 2024 before we could move this one forward. Chair?
No, it's something I found. I, I was very interested in it, but honestly, we, we can't, we can't make that decision where we had it budgeted for yet.
No. It, it's a large ask, but doesn't mean that at budget time, and with whatever grants come open, we may have an opportunity to partake, so.
All right, the next item we have is the review of checks issued, and these are checks from June, July, and August. If there's any questions on that? If there's any questions on that? Any other correspondence on it can be sent to the C A O if you have any questions after the fact.
Yep.
Yes, thanks.
As well, review of action items. Anything anybody wants to mention there?
And again, same thing, Mr. Chair, I'd offer that if, uh, any councillor wants to ask on any action item at any time, simply send me an email, and we'll try and get back to as quick as possible on the status of any of these action items if it's not clear in the chart.
Very much. All right, moving along, we have items added to the agenda, so councillor Biggs, if you have any on the ground.
I did, actually, I had, um, a few residents in your area reach out to me, um, just looking, I guess, for an update on, or if we have an update on the garbage contract. So two questions that were given to me, one is, do we have an update on the garbage contract? And I guess the second question I'll just throw out there first is the, uh, will the garbage contract, um, and I don't, I didn't know the answer, so I brought it to the table, is will the garbage contract be given priority to somebody local as opposed to somebody outside the community?
So the tender is open now, uh, it starts January first, and if anybody wanted to, uh, to bid on that, there's a link from our website, as well as the Nova Scotia Procurement website. It'll link from our website, if I'm correct, to the Nova Scotia Procurement website. So that new tender will start as of January first, and I I don't know if you can speak on any other specifics to that or if there's anything else.
Uh, apart from that, as far as local, there there can't be any buy local provisions on a contract that's worth in excess of ten thousand dollars, which just clearly would be, so no, there won't be any, there won't be any preference for local unless there's other criteria involved, such as experience, uh, you know, suitability of equipment and whatnot, so it's a fair, open transfer in public terms.
The only other thing I'd like to mention on that, too, um, if, you know, if anybody has had their collection missed, and they can just call the municipal office at nine oh two, two-two-six, two-four-zero-zero, and the staff here will make sure that gets taken care of for you, just because where there is a new, uh, a new company doing this, uh, they're not necessarily as familiar with it, so, um, there can be hiccups along the road, and the staff here is trying to do their best to make sure everything is ironed out.
Hundred percent, Mr. Chair, it was, uh, kind of came upon us very quickly. Uh, staff did really, really well trying to, uh, find somebody, uh, to step in. Uh, we did at least find somebody, uh, coming from a neighboring county, so of course, they weren't too familiar with every nook and cranny of our county. And there were bumps on the road. I I think it it took about three different attempts at collection to capture most people. And again, there's probably some, as as you said, Mr. Chair, that are still being missed, and if they are, we have numbers listed, we have, uh, posts out to try and get people to help us work with us, but the company that has been contracted in the interim until the tender is satisfied, uh, is doing really good to work with our Director of, uh, Public Works, uh, to make sure that these people don't get missed again.
So in the tender of the contract, is there stipulations for equipment? Like, is it listed in the, on what can be used or not used, like?
Yeah, not, not terribly specific, there are general comments. Anyone who looks at it, who asks questions, can certainly call the office.
Okay.
It's it's a fairly lengthy document, but, uh, anyone not familiar with looking at them, again, they can, they can pop in or call, and we'll answer questions as best we can just to help them get through it and bid if they so choose.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Awesome. All right. Moving right along with fifteen-minute question period, number to call, if somebody, we have people in the gallery, if anybody wants to come up to ask a question. And as well, a number to call for anybody, nine oh two, two-two-six, nine-eight-eight-five, and it is not restricted to items on the agenda. Oh, great, if you have somebody here from the gallery, thank you.
I have a key. Sure. Can I show, um, can I show something on the, is it a question? No, I I just want to show a flower or, uh, an invasive species that I'm going to talk about. So it's question period, so it it has to be. It's just, it's just like to show what it is.
Yeah, it 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 has to be, we've got to restrict these to questions, like.
Problem?
If if you wanted to book a presentation another night, we could do that.
By all means.
Yeah.
Especially with invasive species, I dealt with them a lot in out west, and they're they're big.
I just wanted to show what what it looks like.
Yeah, but by all means, we'd love to have you back, but.
Yep.
This this is specifically for questions.
Absolutely. I understand, so my name is Claire Doyle, and I'm with the Almedam, uh, Garden Club, the Almedam Garden Club from the whole of the island. So my question tonight is, um, it's a question on woodland angelica. And so in June of this year, um, a public meeting was held to begin a conversation on this invasive species called woodland angelica. And it has totally invaded our landscape here in Almedam, and I would suspect everywhere else in Richmond County. The woodland angelica is is in our ditches, it's in our highway ditches, you're, you've probably seen it as you're driving along, it's in our fields, it's on people's properties, and it's at, it's made its way into the woodlands, so that is destroying our native plants now, uh, including our wild blueberries. And we believe that the municipality can play a vital role in providing residents with useful information about woodland angelica, and that's why I'm here tonight to ask the question about, uh, woodland angelica. Um, and, um, provide information maybe as to how and when to cut this angelica down and how to try to control it. So, um, so my question, so my question is this on angelica. Will the municipality look into this invasive species and work with the community to, uh, help control this invasive weed?
So how our question period works, if I may, Mr. Chair, is is you ask the question tonight, it gets referred back to us, and then we get back to you.
Yes.
So I, as the staff person for council, will will take your question away, and I'll report back to council at the next committee of the whole. And at the same time, uh, where you identified the Almedam Garden Club, we'll reach out to you guys as well. There's other bodies we will have to contact, because I don't know if I want people going out and touching this, uh, when it comes to invasive species, that they could have other biological problems if people are doing it not gloved or et cetera, right?
Yes.
Uh, they may have all the best intentions in the world, but we could be putting people in harm's way.
Yeah.
So there's other people we need to talk to first.
Yeah.
Before I can come back to council with, or and yourself, uh, to answer your question. So we take the question away, we don't answer the question this evening.
Okay, that's fine.
Because it's larger than just the yes, no.
I just wanted to make, uh, people aware and just kind of make the council aware.
Perfect.
That really, um, it really needs to be controlled like it's as runaway. And like you say, um, you, there is information fa, uh, information sheets and on how to proceed.
Right.
But it would be great that the municipality would, um, kind of look at, uh, at the whole process and see if we could do some sort of public education to help our residents. Yeah.
We'll just ask the staff what our options would be, I guess.
Yep.
Yeah. And so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Phone's pretty silent, uh, Mr. Chair.
We'll give the phone another minute or so, maybe if somebody watches, we just will give it to us.
Awesome. No, sir.
All right, so we have no in camera. I'll declare the fifteen-minute question period closed. There being no further business, uh, as of eight twenty-four, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.